Everyone, I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer. Alderman Flores, would you lead us in prayer? And then after the prayer, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Then we'll be led by Alderman at large, George Payne.
As power heads, dear heavenly father, we thank you for this day, dear lord. We thank you for this opportunity to gather and to discuss the city business, father. We ask for discernment and wisdom as we bring these matters to light and as we look forward over the next couple of days to our bunch of workshops, father. In your presence and name we pray. Christ Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the July 18, 2023 meeting.
Second?
Got a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for liens. Mr. Nick Manley, city attorney.
This resolution authorizes for liens to be filed on those properties that were cut in accordance with 211911. And then they'll later be converted into assessments, which will be collected on the tax records.
Shall I move?
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in either properties that would like to speak? Hearing or seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the ARPA sub-recipient agreement with the Horn Lake Creek Interceptor Sewer District.
Yes, the previous to the board authorized providing $3 million of the city ARPA funds to the Horn Lake Creek Sewer District to help with their, for lack of better terminology, a storage tank they're building to help offset the INI. This is part of the grant to the Horn Lake Creek Interceptor District. We need to enter a sub-recipient agreement with the district so that they can receive the funds from the city. And then once that agreement's signed, those funds can be allocated to the district to proceed with the project. But in accordance with the federal regs and along with the MDQ requirements, this agreement is attached for review. We're still waiting on final comments from the district, but due to the, I guess, the time pressure they're under, we want to go ahead and get it approved tonight. Contention upon final approval of the district and the mayor can sign. So if any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But this will authorize that transfer of funds to occur upon the signature of the agreement and in accordance with the resolution that was previously passed.
Just where I make the motion?
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I got one question. So they can't use this for anything but that, right?
Correct. They're under, they also have an agreement with the Q that requires them to use it for that as well. So yes, that's all they can't use it for.
Any other discussion? And again, just a general update, we've talked about this, we're all aware of what a serious matter it is. But at this point, we're still waiting on, you know, the final ruling regarding timelines, other things that relate to costs that would be given to us. And we'll know more hopefully soon about that. And then we will continue to see funding, you know, from the state of Mississippi and also the federal government on any programs that will help with this as well.
Yes, sir. And just to be clear, this agreement, the money we're giving for this project doesn't have anything to do with the sewer issue with Memphis. This is just, they're going to have to do this regardless to help with their own infrastructure infiltration. So to the mayor's point, that's a separate issue. This is just for their own internal requirements. They would have to do regardless.
This is the one, the storage tank out there by the training academy?
Well, I think they found another location. I'm not exactly sure, but there is going to be another location.
Well, is this money going to be wasted in the long run as far as?
No, they've got it.
Whatever upgrades they're doing?
No, no. No matter what, this has to be done, so.
But it's not wasted money for the other solution. It'd still be functional in the others.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, correct. Mayor's correct.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for change order at the Snowden Grove Baseball Complex.
This resolution authorizes a change order in the amount of $806.61. It was a contract with J-Con Development. It's for the painting and infrastructure, or painting of the Snowden Grove Baseball Complex. As part of it, there's more rotten wood than anticipated. So based on some of the estimates and quantities that's set forth in the contract, we need to do a final change order and a final flows out, which will be on your docket tonight. But this change order will authorize the amount of $806.61, and it'll be the final change order for this project.
Make that motion.
Oh, second.
We have a motion, Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for the South Haven Police Department and South Haven Fire Department surplus.
This resolution authorizes a surplus of the shower building, what it's known as, at the South Haven Police Department Fire Department Training Center. Just authorize this to be scrapped and surplus due to the condition along with the health hazard it is now in, or health hazard it now creates. So tonight we just need authorization for this surplus and any actions will be in accordance with 31713, the bidding statutes. But this resolution will surplus that property in accordance with 1725, 25 subsection five, which will be noting that there is no value to this facility more due to the health hazard it creates.
Shall I move?
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? And just for information purposes, this trailer was used, that's how long it's been there. It was used in the Hurricane Katrina aftermath when we had a temporary shelter in the city during that time. So it's aged and, as Nick stated, it's no longer of value. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a city agreement with Tyler Technologies and Chase.
Yes, sir. The board had previously authorized an agreement with Tyler Technologies associated with the credit card payments. As part of the agreements, Chase, which will be the credit card processing entity, requires the merchant, which in this case is the city, to have merchandise and be able to process payments. So we need to also authorize for this agreement with Chase to be signed so we can complete the credit card process with Tyler and authorization for E.D. McWay to sign the Chase agreement so this can proceed as previously approved for the Tyler Technologies credit card applications upgrade that we're doing within the city.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda are city agreements with DFA.
Yes, sir. There's actually three agreements. These agreements are the agreements associated with HB, or House Bill 603, from last legislative session, which earmarked funds to the city for certain projects. The first project is State Line Road and Sweeney Road, traffic signalization improvements. $300,000 was allocated for that project. Snowden Grove Park was, there was $500,000 allocated for use of Snowden Grove Park. And then the Church Road and Tulahoma Road Signal and Intersection Improvements. And $350,000 was allocated for those, for that project as well. So there's three separate agreements. You can approve them all at one time, that's fine, but they're all agreements set forth. The agreement's actually with the Department of Finance and Administration. It sets forth requirements that the funds need to be spent within 36 months. Provide quarterly reports, maintain separate accounts for the funds. But the agreements are all in accordance with state law. And so just need authorization for the mayor to sign those agreements and for he or his designated to take any and all action to effectuate the intent in the agreements as there are a bunch of other forms that are accompanying in agreements that will be handled by administrative.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution to claim private property.
Mr. Mayor, move we adopt a resolution granting authority to clean private property as presented on the state?
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in any of the properties want to speak? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our planning agenda. Ms. Whitney.
So we have an application. Item number one is for design review of an office building to be located on lot two of Airways Commercial Center subdivision. It's going to be just on the east side of Airways, north of Airways Place Cove, actually south of Guthrie Drive. What you see here is, in the design review application, is like a monotone gray and red brick building has a modern appeal to it. It is set to be a spec office space. There's a future expansion to the rear of it for a secondary building that has not been submitted with this. In terms of what you see there elevation wise, the frontage on Airways is a little bit of a concern to the planning commission because the top picture is actually facing south to Airways Place Cove. So in the middle row to the right is what was going to be on Airways. So one of the conditions that the planning commission set forth at that meeting was to doctor that side up, add some landscape and put some faux entryway there so it had a better presence on Airways Boulevard. They did agree to that. There were some minor adjustments to the landscaping and they were required to add some additional decorative lighting on site. They did agree to all of that. And with those comments, it was approved unanimously by the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that we make the move to approve item number one on the planning agenda.
Second.
On item one, we have a motion, Alderman Jerome, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries.
So your next application right here is lot 39 of Silo Square Commercial Subdivision. It is a two-story office building slash possible public use building in the Silo District. What you see there is a two-story, like I said, two-story solid brick building. It does have the roof line and the brick that has been used prevalently through Silo Square. That's the brick you'll see in the black storefronts, the black awnings. That's your mortar that's going to be included in it to give it an aged look. What they've also done is angled the building to kind of hit the corner and done a diagonal access point into it so it has a covered entryway into it. The dormer windows at the top have a bronze metal decorative plating on the interior of it and that also goes above the second story window line. Staff has worked with them obviously quite a bit on this. The site plan that's been used with this and also has the landscaping associated with it puts 55 parking stalls behind the building in a secured fenced area. They do have some public parking out front. Landscaping's been laid out through it. It was pretty basic, so we did ask them to redo the landscaping for us. We want to make sure not only that it meets our requirements, but it's in Silo and Silo has got a tremendous landscape design through there. So they're going to do those adjustments for us. The decorative lighting that's been added to it is the same that you see throughout Silo Square as well. So it was approved as submitted with the comments on landscaping.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve item number two on the planning agenda as presented tonight.
Second.
On item two, we have a motion, Alderman Flores, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion?
What does this build?
That will be a public use building.
Yeah, so it's the building for the proposed police East Precinct.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
I just didn't want to put it out there. I didn't know where it's at. It's a public use building. It's the East Precinct building now.
Glad you said that. I was trying to make sense after that.
Well, I didn't know if that was, I didn't know. Right now it was just, it was an office building, so yeah.
She was hoping you wouldn't ask the questions on it.
More than, more than the mayor would step in and take that on, so yes. But we have been working with the police department.
Garage. I know. What's the garage workhorse on the front or the back?
I just didn't know. Yeah, what you see on the back right there, you see the two Sally ports on the back. That's the rear of the building where the Sally ports are. And if you scroll even further, you'll see the site plan that's associated with it and how it's going to be laid out on the lot. Like I said, we've been working with the developer as well as the police department and it fits very nicely to their needs. So this is what they decided on. There's the layout, which you know right there. So yes.
Yeah, and this is, again, that's why I like, when we did the agreement, you know, for the police East Precinct, all the design was done. You know, it was input to make sure that it's going to be a building that is functional for our needs there. And obviously, since it is in that area, the architectural design and controls will apply. So that's why it's, all that applies as well there.
And I know you can't tell a whole lot from, because there's no color renderings, but one of the things, and DC Vickers is back there, one of the things we wanted to have that nostalgic look, so like the circle police lights and just kind of pull back some of that retro to it. And that will have a lot of that element there as well. But we went through and kind of found the old age brick, something to have that vintage look to it. So we pulled from all the other elements Silo created.
Will any of that parking be fenced in?
All of the rear will be fenced in. So, you know, the goal is, and this is what we discussed a while back, from a police precinct standpoint, you shouldn't have a lot of parking up front for people to just kind of park. You don't want that. So there's only a few parking stalls outside of the secured fenced area. Everything else is behind a rod and secured fence and there's 55 stalls there, which was sufficient for what they could do.
Is there any other discussion on item two? Hearing none, hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Second.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our mayor's report. First thing to report to you, as y'all know, we are having the budget workshops this week on Thursday, preferably just one on Thursday. But we left the spot open on Friday too, if it's necessary. So there's been a lot of budget prep going on. We have completed all the meetings with all the department heads on seeing their specific budget proposals. We've put all that information together and prepared some balanced budget options for all of you, so we'll go over that. First, the format will do like we've done in the past. We'll allow the department heads to come forward and speak first and let all of you ask questions and we'll go through all that first. And then we'll, you know, we'll have, you'll have a spreadsheet that tells you with the options what's in, what's not in. And then we'll be able to go line by line. It'll all be prepared and easy to help us know what's in there, what's not. And if any changes that anyone wants to make, you'll know specifically what line you want to recommend a change. And so we'll go through that this week. But we've been spending a lot of time on that. We got lots of, we've got good news, but we've also got lots of challenges now. You know, I'll go ahead and let you know that inflation is real. And we knew that the national inflation problems would impact everybody, including our operation. And now we're, that's in full force. So we've got some challenges, you know, we got, inflation is tough. And then as y'all know, we have some pretty aggressive goals that we're trying to meet as well. But we'll go through all that. We don't need to get into the details tonight, but we'll go through all that on Thursday. Then the only other update I wanted to let you know is the, told you last meeting that we're going to try to get the summer, the summer program for the ARPA money that we use for street resurfacing. You know, we've had challenge at times getting the contractors back to do resurfacing of our streets. And they've done really well, like they hit the ground running. And so they're almost, by the end of next week, they should be done with all those streets. So that's going to be really good. And it has some high-profile streets on there, you know, two of the biggest ones are Southcrest Parkway, you know, which affects the hospital on the north side. Then it carries south, you know, it gets into the real dense retail area, going to the Town Center Mall, then with Office Depot and Walmart. So having that resurfaced, that was a very expensive fix for us, but one that, as I said last time, has really deteriorated fast. And so it's, you know, going to be very impactful for us to have that done. The other is Sweeney. Y'all know that Sweeney has, in the last, you know, five to 10 years, become a critical, critical north-south arterial road for us. The extension by the county of Mackinville Road to connect to Sweeney is underway as well. But what that means, that takes it all the way to 269, which makes it even more critical that Sweeney, you know, be in good condition. So this stretch is actually one of the northern stretches that starts at Rasco and goes down to about Worthington Estates subdivision, which is north of Church Road, but it's in really horrific condition. So and it's heavily traveled, you know, goes by, you know, churches and then by Greenbrook Park. So it's in dire need of repair, so that one will be done as well. But anyway, that was a positive thing for us, you know, like I said, we've had our challenges getting the crews back because, you know, we are sandwich work for them. They hit us while they're in between bigger projects. And so sometimes we've had trouble getting them back, but I'm very pleased that they were, that they did come back and help us get these streets knocked out, you know, for our summer schedule. And that's all I have this evening on the mayor's report. Next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve the personnel docket as presented on the state?
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update. Nothing tonight. Next on our agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented?
Oh, second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is one claims docket.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve the claims docket in the amount of $8,657,481.22, including demand checks.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
Shall I move?
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. The need this evening is pending a potential claims litigation against city police and infrastructure. And discussion in accordance with Mississippi law, economic development, potentially relocating to the city and interdepartmental personnel with no action. Is there a motion to declare executive session?
Shall I move?
Got a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. The mayor and board will now enter executive session.